All right, we're going to call our regular meeting to order on Thursday, August 14th, 2025, 5:30 PM in the council chambers. I'd like to thank all of y'all for coming this evening. Thank you. And all of those that are joining us online. We'll jump into item number two. If I will have everyone stand and we'll do the pledge of allegiance and prayer by Councilman Wilson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in heaven, we thank you, Father, for this day and all the blessings we have received. Father, you look through our thoughts, Lord, to keep us enough day. Lord, we thank you for this beautiful day we have. We thank you for the sunshine and we thank you for the rain, Lord. We ask that you send us more rain if it's your will. Father, we ask for unity between this council and to our citizen, Lord. Bind us together like chains that cannot be broken. Lord, we want to thank you for our new mayor. Lord, may he be a strong leader, may he show leadership, love, patience, and eager to learn about our community, and eager to learn and listen to our citizens. Lord, we thank you for our city attorney, Bo Dawson, Lord. Thank you for watching over us, over him when he was in the hospital, Lord, and keep healing his body. And we thank him for joining us today. Lord, we thank you for our former mayor, Milton Toller, Lord, who served on this council for many years and served our community, Lord. Thank you for letting him serve this council. Lord, we thank you for our mayor, our council, our staff, who keep things running smoothly, Lord, and we say thank you, Lord. Thank you for your love, for sending your son to the cross to die for us, that we may have eternal life. Lord, give our citizens traveling grace here and traveling grace back home. Lord, we ask to give us wisdom to make the best decision that we can. This is the prayer, we pray in your son's name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
You're going to pass a collection page before we sit down?
... upgrades to the substation, the L-CRA substation. You're going to notice, what was that date here? From 18/2025 to 27/2025, the transformer will be located on the back of the big semi-trailer. The utility lines come in, will go to that, and then it will feed out to our distribution lines from that point. They're doing this for updates and upgrades to the substation. They have to disconnect it in order to repair it and update it and upgrade it. So when you see this happening, that's what's happening. It's already in line with L-CRA to have it scheduled for that. I'd also, with much joy, show you that since the first of the month, there has only been one complaint of dirty water in the city. We're happy to report that. With that said, I would also like to say, our water looping of the dead ends seems to be working. But also, I went to Columbus, and I have water samples, the dirty water and filtered water. I can pass these out, but council members saw this during budget. If you like, I can pass these out, so each of y'all can look at that here. You can tell, holding them side by side, especially at the light, they differ slightly. And I have the swab.
Not the dirty water, you can take the other one.
I want to keep it together as well, Lord, just passing them around as they go. I had those brought in. Let me get back to the speaker. I had these brought in from Columbus on a special request, so that you guys could see what a filter could do for the water system. It comes with a price tag. The system that they have in place was a million and a half, two years ago. And that sounds like a lot of money, but look at the water quality you'll be getting. It's a huge difference. It may be worth the cost. We're trying to find the funds to pay for this right now. I'm going to leave it at that at this point. Also, what we're looking at, council members, you have a copy of this BEFCO statement, and Chad with BEFCO is here if you have any questions. This is an itemization of what they could do to look at replacing all the metal lines that we have underground, the metal water lines with PVC plastic. They're proposing to do it in quadrants, much like your street repair process. If you want it done all at one time, it's a bigger price tag. If you do it in phases and quadrants, it could still be a bigger price tag over time, because prices never go down, they always go up. So if you have any questions, Brad's here to help you. He introduced himself earlier.
Chad.
Chad, excuse me. I'm sorry, Chad. I'm bad with names, just ask anybody. If you had to come up to the podium, please introduce yourself.
Good afternoon, council. As Mr. Dixon said, Chad, I'm almost, a lot of you know who I am, born and raised here in Wymer. So basically, what you have is a proposal for BEFCO to basically cost estimate what you might be looking at. And there's a lot of caveats in that sentence for a reason, mainly because the map that we have at this point, which was prepared in part between Mike Barrow, if y'all recall, and Strand. Mike, kind of from what I understand, I talked to Strand earlier this week, and they kind of collaborated with Mike to figure out what lines he was aware of that were non-PVC, but the map isn't complete. In other words, obviously, not every line in town had been uncovered, so he wasn't sure what lines are or aren't PVC. So it's a bit of a guessing game. So the way we outlined our proposal is, we basically are proposing to do it hourly, right? So we'll try to dive in a little bit more, talking with Strand, getting their actual files from them, figuring out exactly which lines they do know are non-PVC, and try to do cost estimating. And as City Manager said, we'll try to break it up in quadrants, and then actual individual streets in some form or fashion. You know, certain lines, obviously, are PVC, so we're not going down certain streets, and so on and so forth. Try to break it down to where, even if it isn't an all-at-once project, right, which would be a multimillion-dollar endeavor, okay, you would maybe be able to chew off the worst part of town first, which I understand has been the northwest side of town historically. So, you know, maybe council would try to find a funding source for that area first, and then move around the city as might be entertained. The second part of that proposal is cost estimating a filtration system. And after reading a water quality report that was put out, you know, your main issues are in water well nine and 10, right? So mainly, the likelihood of a need for a filtration system would occur here at the downtown plant, and not necessarily at water plant number three. So you might be able to, you know, limit it to one filter unit instead of multiple sites, which, again, would make it cheaper. So we'll, in doing that, you know, we have to dive in. There's different filtration systems, take different constituents out of the water. Every city, every water is different, so part of that process will be talking with vendors with their different products, trying to figure out what might be the best solution here in Wymer. Each one of those filtration systems require different setups, so it would be imperative to try to figure out our best guess as to which filter system would work without doing a pilot study, which is also generally required once you get into the design phase, which is basically, you know, doing a small treatment to figure out, you know, what works best for the water constituents that you have. So, you know, part of that is, you know, byproduct of filtration is you have to backwash those filters, right? So, you know, there's different components, different filters act differently, the media that is used in the filters are different, and have a long-term cost replacement on those. So there's just a lot of variables that we have to look into. But the idea here is to have council a planning tool to, you know, kind of understand what kind of ballpark you're playing in, is really the goal.
And Chad?
If we go with y'all, how soon could y'all get started?
Well, so, as far as the estimate goes, basically, you know, it's an hourly estimate, so we would try to jump on. It's a bit of a mapping component, so that we can show you, you know, where we're looking at lines and then how much they cost. So I would imagine this to be a couple-month endeavor to figure those things out. The reality is, is at the end of the day, I think funding is the larger issue that would hold you back from getting the shovel on the ground, right? So, you know, I don't know what the city's financial situation is as far as that type of funding mechanism, but, you know, that would be the big thing. So, you know, first, this is more or less a planning tool, right? It's not a bucket-in-the-ground tool. It's kind of the step one, identifying those areas, learning more about what it's all going to cost, and then identifying maybe what areas you want to target first, and the funding available to do so.
And Chad, you might want to address what your not-to-exceed budget was for that?
Right, so we do plan on doing this hourly. We put a $20,000 budget number on that, okay? The idea is, I like to do things hourly, and that, to me, is both fair to council and to BEFCO, right? With the unknowns that we frankly just don't know yet, as far as how many lines I'm going to have to cost estimate, you know, it's the most efficient way that I know I'm going to be able to, you know, give you guys the best price that I can without overcharging you, frankly, right? So the 20,000, we like to believe, is should be sufficient at a maximum. It's a not-to-exceed, which means if we start getting up to where we're looking at, maybe bumping into that amount based on our hours, then certainly, we're going to call and say, hey, look, here's what we're up against, here's what we've accomplished, here's how much more we think it'll cost. Now, having said that, we usually try to put those not-to-exceed numbers at a height that we don't generally ever approach, unless there's a change of scope somehow.
And so for this bid, you're pretty much just taking Strand's data, reviewing it, and kind of getting us a breakdown for a bid to replace what they have on file.
Right, so, yeah, this is your first step. So, you know, ultimately, you know, you would have to go, once you have this, right, you're identifying the money that it would take to construct it. At that point, you would have to go out likely for design plans, right? Because anything technically over $20,000 of public improvement is supposed to be signed and sealed by an engineer. So you would go to a design level at that point, design it, you know, based on probably topographic surveys, and then go out for anything over, actually, they're about to change this, as Bo could probably expand upon, but currently, $50,000 is the most that a city can go and ask a contractor to do, okay? They have to get three bids for anything between $25,000 and $50,000, you can go to three different contractors and ask them for a number. Anything above $50,000, you have to go out for a public bid that's publicly advertised, right? So that's a different process to go through that route.
So, so say you get Strand's data, and you see half the town or a quarter of the town is not, you don't have any data on, would we then get a change order and say this is what it would take to figure out what's in those areas?
That would be up to council if, and city management, as far as, you know, what level that you want to get into, right? The city could do some potholing if they so chose with city forces. What we do not have in here is third-party excavation, so, you know, we're not trying to bring a VAC truck in and identify each line that is unknown currently. And I would venture a guess as to say, and it's truly a guess, because I don't have all of their data yet, not in its raw form, I'm going to guess that we know about for sure 40% is where we're probably at right now. I would think it would go up from there, once I get their actual data. But how much more, it's tough to say.
Based on other projects, what shall's timeline, you know, two months from now, we had something to make some decisions on? Then from there, if we were to go out for bids to start a project, is that additional four, five, six months?
It's largely dependent on the size, I would say. I mean, if we're talking about trying to tackle the entire multimillion-dollar project, you're probably not going to put a, you know, between design, survey, design, construction, bidding, right, route and contracts, realistically, you're probably not putting the shovel in the ground until first quarter of '28, '27, excuse me.
And so then, just to confirm, so this bid, it's mainly for office time, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Don, this is not on the agenda tonight to vote on?
No, not on the agenda to vote on tonight. Information only, City Manager information. Is that everything for Chad? Thank you, Chad.
Thank you. Good, guys. Thank y'all.
Also, I passed out, or showed the one complaint about dirty water. I've contacted Wes Schupach at Schupach Construction, Mark Hoffman at Hoffman Dozier Incorporated, William Cook with WJC Construction, and Mercer Construction. Mercer has not called back. I have had meetings in the field with these three contractors in our hotspot areas. This hotspot area here, mentioned here, has been mentioned all along, up at Franklin Drive, and I also met with Schupach at Center Street and, shoot, a shoe name, Converse. And that area there, that's a hotspot. Hoffman Dozier, I met with him at, again, at the Franklin Avenue area, or Franklin Street area, and they're getting bids into us. We'll know more once they get their bids in, and I'll make you aware of that information there. My final City Manager update this evening is, I got an email from Aaron at ccgcd.net. He's regarding a grant from the Texas Water Development Board. AMPSS information is for smaller cities. There are grants out there that can help us with some of these water lines. Exactly how much it is, I don't know. I just received this August the 11th, and I was in training, but I do have the application here attached, and we will be applying for that, whatever amount we can get. Hopefully, we will receive the grant to move forward on that, and that'll help with some of the cost offset for the citizens. That basically completes my City Manager report. I'm now going to turn it over to David Mason with the Finance Department.
Mayor, council, I put a packet of the third-quarter report in front of me. So we're at the third quarter. If you check, turn to page 15, the summary page. We're targeting for...
Started a new class this year. It was needle felting class, which we're going to continue on with that. And we actually have the class tomorrow at three thirty at the library. So you can come join us with that. We've been having about four to eight patrons involved. And, um, oh yeah, our paint the rock snake, Roscoe. Anybody that wants to come by the library and pick up a rock, please come by, paint it, and add it to our snake to make it go for miles. The kids love it, and adults too. They're all like, ooh, pretty. Um, also, let's see, the calendar is the last thing I want to mention. For August on Monday, we have our Monday movie Diary with the Whoopee Kid, rated PG at four PM, given out free popcorn and water. Get to mention about our test club on Tuesdays from three forty-five to four forty-five. Our library emotions at ten on Wednesdays. Family story time on Thursdays at ten. All exciting, good stuff. Next one will be about bugging with the bees. And then we have our friends at library protecting against fraud and scams program on the twenty-ninth at ten AM. RSVP to let me know if you're going to come or not, so we can have a seat for you. And that's all. Any questions about the library? All good?
All good.
Alright, thank you. Sorry we're late.
Alright, we'll move into item number four. It's citizens' presentations and comments. In accordance with the Texas Attorney, uh, Attorney, Texas Attorney General's opinion, any public comment that is made on an item that is not on the posted final agenda will only be heard by the city council. No formal action, discussion, deliberation, or comment will be made by the city council. I do have some citizens to sign up, but they're wanting to speak later. Is there anybody that wants to speak now that hasn't signed up? Come up to the podium and I'll write you down if it's your name. Rachel, on.
Oh, also, I wanted to speak, not to the agenda item, I wanted to do.
You want to do something now? Okay, go ahead.
I'm not sure if this is the time to do this.
Please state your name for the record.
Okay, it's Al, and the last name is K U E H N. I know that's confused me for seventy-three years. That's pronounced Keen. And Mayor, I apologize if I called you Tucker.
I've been called worse.
You know, and you probably had this Tucker, the Fox News commentator. But anyway, I don't know if this is the time. I did want to say something about if y'all are going to appoint a new council member. And maybe I need to wait till that time. I did have something I wanted to say on that. Do y'all want me to say that now?
I would say, well, let's wait until that item, and is that on?
Coming up.
Uh, that's in, uh, eight C, the appointment of the council person?
Okay.
Let's wait, and I'll put you down for.
Apologies for waiting.
That's alright.
I was waiting there.
Okay.
Okay, because you're on for eight.
Yeah.
No one else wanting to speak? Alright, we'll move to item agenda five. It's proclamations and recriminations, recognitions.
Mayor Proten, there are no items for action at this time. The only item will be addressed to item eight, business, uh, AP.
Alright. So we'll move to agenda item number six. A is discussion and update on the police chief applicants. Dawn.
Thank you, Mayor Proten, councilor, citizens. The update on the chiefs are, we have, uh, had multiple applicants. We had some that have, uh, applied. We've got scheduled interviews for Friday. They'll have, I had three interviews scheduled there, but one officer went ahead and went to work at the Wymer Police Department. He's a sergeant there. Another one just pulled out for undisclosed reasons. She said she decided that Wymer didn't look like it would be the place for her. Uh, we're still interviewing the gentleman from, uh, San Antonio. And then next Wednesday, we have three other applicants there. One of them is in the audience tonight, Mr. Livingston. Uh, there's a Mr. Michon, and there's a guy named Mitchell Bennett. He's from outside the area. So those are the three applicants that we'll be interviewing on Wednesday. Mr. Ascencio De Leon is the applicant we'll be interviewing Friday. The mayor is sitting in on the committee for the interview. There's two other police chiefs from adjoining cities, but there's also Lonnie Henze, who is from here from Wymer. And there's Bo Reese, who's, uh, justice of the peace. So he'll be on that interview panel as well for fair equal distribution as citizens as well. And I'm a citizen, I'll be on there too, so I just want you to know, we want to get the right person to the job here.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, we'll go to B, discussion on the Texas film corridor. Dawn.
Thank you, Mayor Proten. I have a brief discussion on.
I do have some citizens that will speak on this.
Okay.
Do we want to do them first?
Yes, look, thank you.
Okay. Um, Angela Lee.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Angela Lee. I was born and raised here, and still live here, and we are raising our children here also. So I want to speak this evening on the topic of the Texas film corridor. And, um, I know that the former mayor has wanted to have Wymer to be a movie filming location for many years. And never did I imagine that this could be a possibility. It sounds great, movie stars, Wymer becoming famous, tourists, but stardom comes at a price. And what are we willing to pay in Wymer, Texas? There are so many unanswered questions and concerns that I have, as well as other Wymer citizens. And my first concern is the absence of information in our local newspaper. Wymer citizens had to find out about this project in two neighboring newspapers and the internet. And it seems that this project has been kept a secret from the people that matter the most. What are the benefits of this project in Wymer? The film industry is huge, with promises that sound too good to pass up. A quote by Lao Tzu says, "There is no calamity greater than lavish desires. There is no greater guilt than discontentment, and there is no greater disaster than greed." What possible disaster could come from this proposed movie project? Huge buildings, a hotel, restaurants, income for the city, movie stars, new citizens? I can understand how this looks so lavish, but is this what the citizens of Wymer and surrounding areas want? Why would neighboring communities turn down this opportunity? Probably for the same concern that I have. An article in the Texas Monthly discussed filming in Smithville, Texas. Although there were several positive outcomes in the city, there were also as many negatives. The filming company painted some buildings, paved some roads, and compensated some businesses. Although this sounds like a great opportunity for our small town, they also stated roads being closed for filming, neighborhoods being disrupted during filming, homes being changed, and trees being uprooted. Businesses were closed for days, weeks, even months for filming in front of them. Some of these businesses were compensated for some of their lost revenue. But imagine Casper Meat Market or MG Farm Service Center being closed because filming was taking place. You may think that this would certainly not happen, or there would be many ways around closures. How do we know this for certain? Will there be some type of contract with the city, with neighborhoods, with homeowners, or with businesses? Who will make sure these contracts will be written? Who will monitor these contracts? Will the filming companies stand up to their word, or will money play a key part and citizens be left stranded? I know that this piece of property is not located inside the city limits. So what does the city of Wymer gain from this? Well, there's two scenarios. Let them purchase the property and it be outside of the city limits, or the city of Wymer annex the property. If the city of Wymer decides to annex the property, who pays for the expenses? Wymer does not have the funds for such items. Let's say the filming company agrees to pay for the expenses, such as water access, a utility hooked up, sewage. So what do we lose? And who pays for the upkeep and repairs? Certainly the filming company, right? Is there a contract that states this, or do we just take their word for it and hope for the best? What if that is not the outcome we anticipated, and the city of Wymer has to spend more money for these expenses? We do not have the funds for these expenditures. The funds from the city need to fund projects in our town that benefit our citizens. This project would also be located in the area of town that is already congested with traffic. What are the city's plans to minimize the traffic congestion due to an increase in the number of people coming into this site? Will the city or county have to fund stoplights, which require poles, electricity, and maintenance? What if the filming project is built, and the city does not annex the land and possible expenses? Any income would go to the county and not necessarily the city of Wymer. What if the filming does not happen within the city of Wymer, but in neighboring cities? What do we receive from this? There would be no benefits to our city, but we would still have the expenses from the project. Wymer does not have the infrastructure needed for such a project. We are, are already seeing the problems with our outdated water system. The film project may pay for their water system, but what about the problems all over town? Well, we see that that much revenue from the project to fund projects that we know need attention. With the large property, number of buildings, and influx of employees, will Wymer have the security needed to protect our local citizens? Will the film project provide its own security? Will they secure the location twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week? What if no one is filming during certain months? Will they still provide security? Or will that burden be placed on the Wymer Police Department, or the Colorado County Sheriff's Department? Neither one of these departments has the number of deputies needed to protect local citizens and a large facility as this. The company states it will employ over two thousand people. That is more than the population of Wymer. We cannot even get our local citizens to work at our local businesses. Where will these employees come from? Are we willing to introduce Wymer to double the people needed to run this project? Where will they live? Where will they eat? Where will the children go to school? Our schools are already at a high capacity. Are we willing to risk our own children's education by increasing class sizes? Is the filming project willing to build bigger schools, provide for the needs of the students, and increase the number of highly qualified teachers? Will these new families live here year-round? Or will students enroll for a few months and then leave and continue this cycle throughout the year? Are we willing to disrupt the educational process of our own children? Where will these employees eat? Build more restaurants, they said in one of the articles in neighboring papers. Where will they build these? Inside their own facility, inside Wymer city limits? Will this restaurant be accessible to all of the local citizens, or only the movie stars and employees? Will we receive any benefits from this? Our local restaurants and caterers may not have the means to accommodate such a large facility and take care of its local citizens and travelers. Where will all these film project employees live? Wymer does not have a large amount of rental properties. There are not that many homes for sale. Remember, they're proposing employing over two thousand people. The article in the neighboring newspapers stated they would build a hotel. That would help in finding residences for the workers. Do we receive that hotel tax if it's not inside of the city limits? Now, let's think about a different situation. Let's imagine that after a few years, the filming project fails, or moves to a better location. What do we do with this facility, this hotel? Will that be sold to another hotel chain? Or will it be sold to a company that rents rooms for those that are economically disadvantaged? What type of renters does this building bring into our community? Our local families have children that move away. And then a lot of them come back to live and raise their families here in Wymer. There is a nostalgia about living in Wymer because of its culture, atmosphere, friendliness, and small size. People know each other, students know all of their classmates, we look out for each other. Will we lose that if this film project is built in Wymer? What happens to our local residents if this project is built and movie stars and film directors buy property here? Will our local residents be able to afford the increase in property taxes? Will they be forced to downsize or sell their family land or property because taxes have become too high due to large homes and high property prices? Do we want to be the reason our elderly can no longer afford to do citizens in Wymer, or become a burden to others? This project sounds enticing to a point. What is Wymer's investment? Is it in greed and stardom, or is it in our local community and citizens? Does Wymer want to continue being a wholesome community that works for its citizens? The leaders in Wymer have a decision. Muak Kabaki said that leadership is a privilege to better the lives of others. It is not an opportunity to satisfy personal greed. I am against the Texas film corridor, building a larger facility near Wymer. I do not see the large-scale benefits for our future. If the film company, company wants to come film a movie in Wymer, I invite them to see what we have to offer. But I do not believe in a large-scale film industry. I hope the leaders of the city of Wymer will take into consideration all the pros and cons of this project. With such a large project affecting so many facets of our community, I feel the council needs to make sure the community voices are heard. There are too many questions and too many uncertainties. It should not be a decision treaded online and only by a few people. Thank you for my opinions and my questions and advice.
April.
Good afternoon. My name is April Nicolinka, and I, along with Angela, was born and raised in Wymer. Angela, that was amazing. Um, I'm going to reiterate some of the things that she's already touched on, but I do think this is very important. Um, my husband and I have three school-aged children, and we both run businesses in Wymer. Thank you all for placing this item on the agenda so it can be discussed. Like Angela said, there's just a lot of unknowns here. We, we don't know, is there a contract that's been signed with this company? We, I feel like the citizens don't really know what's going on. And so, yeah. Okay, okay. Um, so it's very important that the community is informed of what's happening. So my first question is, what is the status of this Texas film corridor and has an agreement been signed? Answer that later, I guess. Um, is signed, you approved it, what are the terms? Um, will there be tax maintenance? Like, there's, there's so many things that surround this giant project coming to our town. I read reports in the newspapers in neighboring towns regarding this project. They are estimating that two thousand jobs could possibly be generated by this project in our area. What kind of people will these types of jobs attract? Will they share the same values and culture that we enjoy in Wymer? Obviously, not all two thousand live in Wymer, but even if half did along with their families, our town's population could potentially grow a hundred percent. Would they have to bring into great housing? Where would that be located, and what does that look like? I understand that this project can potentially bring jobs, restaurant shopping, lodging, and more property and sales tax revenue into the city. However, what will the social, cultural, and educational costs be? Too much growth too quickly would put a major strain on our infrastructure, utilities, and our schools. Wymer is a special place. That's why my husband and I want to live here, and we want to raise our kids here, because it's an amazing place to live. It's special because of our strong values, our community involvement, and the culture of excellence. That is why, that's why we have chosen to live here. One of the many reasons we choose to live in Wymer is so that our kids can go to a small school, have small classes, know all their classmates, and are able to participate in as many extracurricular activities as they wish. This helps them to become well-rounded and prepared for the future. As parents, it's comforting to personally know the teachers, administrators, and staff that interact with our children every day. That is very comforting. I'm so thankful to know the people who work with my kids every day. Wymer ISD is currently a two A, is classified as two A Division One. This classification is determined by the amount of students in high school. Two A Division One ranges from a hundred and eighty-one point five to two hundred fifty-three students in the high school. The last time my enrollment was counted in twenty twenty-three, we were approximately a hundred and eighty-eight students. We're only about seventy kids away from being three A, Division Two. If a thousand people moved to Wymer along with their families, they could be looking at becoming three A or maybe even four A. Personally, if we wanted our children to attend a bigger school, we would live in a bigger town. I'm not opposed to all growth. I just believe that it needs to be strategically planned. Other communities enlist their economic development committees to recruit businesses to come to their towns. With gradual growth, the community can plan for more single-family home options, and it would not be such a burden on our infrastructure, utilities, and schools. I believe that most people choose to live in Wymer because they enjoy the advantages of small-town life. If they wanted the amenities that are available in a much larger town, they would live in a much larger town. There are certain inconveniences that come with living in a rural area, but in my opinion, the benefits far outweigh those inconveniences. If this project is allowed to come, it will completely change the culture of our small town. And then it would be a tragedy. I'm very grateful for each of you for serving on this council. I know hard decisions have to be made. And I'm very grateful that each of you fall into your time to be here and give us the ability to express our concerns. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak on this item on the film corridor that hadn't signed up? Dawn is going to turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Proten. To put some of your minds at ease, that was a fictitious article in the newspaper. There was no truth to it whatsoever. No contracts have been signed. I would have been the one to sign it.
Right, go ahead.
I'd sign them. The city has not made any offers to the developer. Uh, the developer will need to provide the required infrastructure for the site, whether it's in the county or if it's in the city. They have to provide that, and we have to accept it with a long-term maintenance bond on that as well. Uh, there's still no signed contracts, and the location is still undetermined at this point. They have ideas of where they would like to locate. Uh, most of it is in the county, a small portion, a couple of small portions are within the city limits. But there's no signed contracts with the property owners, there's no signed contracts with the funding agents. All that's just an empty bucket. Uh, no new developments have been discussed since the last meeting before the previous mayor resigned in July twenty twenty-five. The one conversation I did have with the guy running the project, all I know is his name is Robert, was still that the funding is six to eight weeks out for signing of the contract. That's for the funding, and then they have to get their funding in place, then they have to place the contract on the property. None of that's been done yet. I want to put you at ease. When, as it comes available, and as it becomes obvious, we're going to keep adding this to the council agenda, because this city council has to vote on every item that you've talked about tonight, about every item that I've covered here. The EDC, Amy's sitting right back there, she's with the EDC, as is David and myself. We keep close watch on businesses. Businesses are subject to zoning. Businesses are subject to zoning and city council approval. We got your back. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. All right, if there's no more discussion on that, we'll go to Agenda Item Number Seven. Agenda. Minutes of July tenth, regular council meeting. July twenty-fourth, special council meeting. July thirtieth, special council meeting. And August sixth, official council meeting.
We'll move. Dr. D.
All right, there was a motion by Scardino and a second by Wilson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. All right, we'll go into Agenda Item Number Eight. A Resolution of Appreciation to Milton R. Kohler. He's not here. Doors. Do we just present it later? We do have, we do have his resolution that's been signed. We will get that presented to him. All right, now we go to B, Administer Oath of Office to the Appointed Mayor. And I will exit.
She's graduating again.
Just remember, I'll put y'all in.
Hope I never get a ticket now.
She was going to give you pro-bug.
Okay.
You're going to be right here, and then repeat after me.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. In the name and by the authority
In the name and by the authority
Of the state of Texas
Of the state of Texas
Aye.
Aye, Carlton Tucker.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
That I will faithfully execute
That I will faithfully execute
The duties of
The duties of
The office of the mayor of the city of Wymer
The office of the mayor of the city of Wymer.
Of the state of Texas
Of the state of Texas
And will be, to the best of my ability
And will be, to the best of my ability
Protect and defend the Constitution
Protect and defend the Constitution
And laws of the United States
And laws of the United States
And of this state
And of this state
So help me God
So help me God.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you to the council and for putting your faith in me, your trust. And as I said previously, I think this speaks for the whole council. Our only interest is in representing what is best for you and Wymer. And many of the thoughts that were just expressed, I think, are pretty well-aligned with the values that exist here in Wymer. This is a special place. That's why we moved here. Although we're grandparents, we care for hundreds of children every single day in these schools. And this community is based on faith, on values, and themes that represent the family and what the family is all about. And we are proud to serve in that respect. I think everyone sitting here has that same view, and that we are thankful that we can represent you in that way. So as Don said, in a cheerful way, I might say, because he is that kind of person. We do have your back, and we are open to your thoughts. And our only purpose is to make sure that we can do the very best for Wymer, and the very best only comes when its people and its citizens speak up so that we know what it is that you expect. We represent when we can expect to know what they want. So with that, we will proceed, so thank you again. Thank you, Mayor. The next item of business is to appoint council to place four, that's my previous position. So with that, the chair will entertain any motions. We'll have the speakers, okay? So if we have anyone who wants to speak in regard to that, we'll have you come forward.
Just to get in a break from the important things for a minute. My wife's uncle's a farmer up close to Ludarell, where they found part of the best little chicken ranch in Texas. They asked him to shut down for a few days while they found there. He wasn't unhappy with it because he got to eat lunch every day with Dolly and Bert and some of the other people there, so that was a plus, but that's not my feelings here. My name is Al Keen. As we said, I was raised here, graduated in nineteen seventy from Wymer High. I don't live in the city, but I've got friends that live here. I, I think a lot of your businesses are owned by people that don't live in the city, but I pay taxes for them, so I, you know, I hope you don't mind my getting in maybe what you consider your business. But as you said, you know, we've got feelings. Maybe we ought to come and let you know, that's how you know. Got a new mayor, getting back to the farming business. You know, a farmer, what's he doing when he gets to the end of the row and he can't go any further? He turns around and goes in another direction. And so if we've had some misunderstandings, I hope this will lead us in another direction. I'll get to that in a second. I really never, didn't get to play on this very well, because I had a funeral in Livingston to go to today, but I think one of the biggest deals, if y'all are interested in why people mistrust you, I've seen a few things, I think, not your fault. We all take something and run with it, you know? And I think part of our thing, you know, I didn't realize that Mercury had three people on their staff. And, you know, if you want to hear about when your son's going to play ball, that's a good, and we need that. We need that. But the biggest complaint I've heard is, like the movie industry thing, nobody could get any information on it. And, you know, we all turned to the Mercury, and it wasn't there. So, you know, I asked a lady here, she didn't want me to mention her name, and she gave me some information. When I get, when we don't get information, we turn to Facebook. Boy, that's a great place to get your information, you know? But, you know, sometimes you feel that that's the only place I'm going to hit it. So all transparency will be in your mind that you're going to try your best to get things out without a local newspaper that does hard news, and that's not a cut, Joe. But I understand with your staff limitations, you can't do it. So we've had to go to the citizen or Andy Baglin, I forget what, the Fifth County Record, to get our news on that. And so I hope we can think about that, is make sure we get our information out there. We're all scared to get up here. I am, because I'm scared I'm going to step on somebody's toes. But I think we may have some difference of opinions, and I hope we can work together on that. I know this, being in news in four different markets, radio news, I think I have a little background on what I think is going to happen at a meeting. And it seems for a town the size of Wymer, we've had several issues come up, but I know Victoria probably has a lot more. But for this size town, it seems like we've had some issues. Part of it is because we don't have the information out there. Now, you've got a point. Where are all the people that are worried, you know? We got, or want to know some things. Where are they at tonight, you know? Well, of course, y'all couldn't hold all of them. So anyway, that's why I'm here, is to make some thing or two known. The thing is, I'm all for being a newsman. Tell it like it is, as much as you can tell right away, so we don't leave room for rumors. And I think that's really important, so we can continue to do that. It looks like you're on the right track. I hadn't met you yet, but I've heard about you, Tucker. Did it, Mayor? You know, I've heard a lot of good things about you, and so I'm glad we got you. But I'm, at this point, I want to talk about public outlook, how they outlook. You may say, I don't care, I don't have any spanking fear about what somebody thinks about me or what I'm doing. Public perception. And so I don't know who you're going to nominate tonight. My idea though is, and I apologize, I have to use real names here, because it's the only way I can discuss this. And don't take this as a knock against anybody. But the deal is, there's a possibility of naming somebody that has a relative already on the council and appointing them. And yes, it's legal, it doesn't break the nepotism laws. What it does is help break trust. And so, you know, I prayed about this, and I keep thinking, well, if Rex got the character that I hear he has, he'd say, well, you know, I'll just wait until election time, when, in about six or seven months, and then we'll have an election, and people will feel better, and they'll know the circumstances about this. And so whoever you're going to nominate, I'm going to support him. But that's my feelings on this, is public perception to me is important. You can't do that all the time, I get that, but I don't think this would be important. It would build y'all's reputation some, it'd build Rex's reputation. And so I hope y'all will consider letting me speak.
Thank you, sir.
Hold on, I did want to say I do have somebody in mind that I'm going to throw out there. And his name is Gary Oliver. I'm Gary Churnock. I don't know if he's here tonight, but that would, you know, he seemed to interest me. I've watched some of the YouTube things, and he had some collected thoughts, and so that would be somebody I'd like to mention, okay? Thank you.
Hope to see you at another council meeting, sir. First class.
You ready?
I guess I've already been introduced. Good afternoon, my name is Rex Klazel. I'm here today to address the open council seat. I feel that during this time of change and uncertainty, it would be helpful to have someone with council experience to fill that open seat until the next election. I served on this council for ten years and have a decent understanding of how the city operates and the challenges it faces. I would be interested in filling that spot to bring some stability to the council and feel that I could be a reliable resource as the city navigates some of the problems that are currently on its plate. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Kevin?
Kevin Fishbeck. Thank you, Mayor and council. I am Kevin Fishbeck, lifelong resident of Wymer, former city councilman. I served six years on the city council from 2008 to 2014, sat in your chair.
It's a good chair.
It's a great chair. I want to congratulate you. I know you'll do a great job. I know my wife admires you tremendously with the work that you and her did together in Wymer, at Wymer Elementary School. We've got a good council, we do. I think we have a very good new city manager who is pushing us in the right direction and is not afraid to get his hands dirty and get things done. I'm addressing the council today because over the years, and I too, Mr. Keen, am an old radio dog. I spent many years in the radio business as an investigative reporter, so I know how these meetings work. And transparency is rule number one, for sure. I was here when, you know, you guys are going through a tough time right now. You've got a lot of things going on. You just had your mayor retire. I was here when we had our top administrator abandon the city as well. He walked out, okay? We got through that. You will get through this. But I think the way you get through this is with a council member and a new council member, and you have to appoint that has experience. It's tough to put in a fresh person. I know from my experience of coming onto the council, it takes time. You can't just come in guns blazing. You have to have a learning curve. We have another election in May. That seat will be up, the mayor's seat will be up, and Councilman Christian's seat will be up. There's ample opportunity. There's an election every May in our community. We have, as Mr. Keen said, we have a lot of Facebook warriors out there, you know, that are beating their keyboards to death with innuendos and accusations. And I know it's hard not to get wrapped up in that as a council member. And the one thing, the best advice my dad ever gave me as far as to be on this council, which he proudly served for over a dozen years, was to do what you think is right for the community of Wymer. Not what the people are saying, but you have to do what's right, what you think is for the community of Wymer, its citizens and its taxpayers. That's all I'm asking. I'm not endorsing anybody. I could come up here and say, appoint me. You know, but I'm not doing that. I could say, appoint Rex, appoint Gary, appoint the man in the moon. I'm not doing that. That's your job, that's what you have to figure out. But as a former council member, I think it's important to keep stability with someone who knows the ropes. You've got a lot of decisions coming up, a lot of tough decisions. And I think you've got to get the person in there that can work cohesively with you and not have an outside source constantly pushing that person. Thank you very much for your time, and follow me, thank you for your service. It's not an easy job. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else that would like to speak in regard to this particular item? With that, I will open the floor for nominations for place four of the council.
Mayor, I'd like to, I know I have a possible run that counts. Your email has been full, your text message has been full.
Yes, sir.
Who reached you a point? But my good, I would like to appoint Gary Churnock to place four of the board. He's already serving on planning and zoning committee, and I think he'll be a great candidate for our council.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Another call for a second. Motion. Nails for lack of a second. Do I have another motion on this matter?
Mayor, I'd like to thank Kevin Fishbeck for stepping up, and that meant a lot for us. It definitely did make this decision a lot easier. I'd like to nominate Rex Klazel to fill that seat.
Second.
And we've had a nomination and a second. Is there any further discussion? And we'll call a vote on that, and I'd like the members to vote by place, starting here.
Yes. Place two, yes.
Place one, yes.
Abstain. Place three, since Mr. Churnock didn't give it our vote, yes.
So that vote was?
Three yeses.
Three yeses. So that motion will pass. So our new council member, Gary Churnock?
No, Rex.
Very sorry, Rex Klazel. His name is blowing up, it would be Rex Klazel. What we will do is, we will give you a six-day waiting period for that, and then we will square him in. The next item. The next item will be appointment of a member to the EDC Corporation Board. In the past, the mayor has served in that position, I'm happy to fill that position if that is the will of the council. If so, we would need a motion to that regard.
I make the motion that we appoint Mayor Tucker to the member of the EDC Corporation Board.
Second. And we now have a motion by Councilman Roberts and a second by Scardino. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those nay? That passes unanimously. Okay, item E, closing the 100th block of East Post Street and 100th block of North Mechanic Street for Chamber Rock Block, scheduled for September 26 at 4:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. And you can see that information on page 39. Don?
I think it's the same one as the last one.
Yeah, it's just a map. We have already approved, by getting approved for some additional street lighting for safety, we strung up along East Post Office Street to the, from Center Street east to Mechanic Street and then down Mechanic Street. The Chamber has already gotten approval from the building owners to hang these lights from their buildings. It should add to the flair and ambiance and the safety for the citizens that are attending the Rock the Block weekend. Any questions?
Any a motion on that?
Yeah, any a motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve, please.
I'll make the motion that we close the 100th block of East Post Office Street and 100th block of North Mechanic Street for the Chamber's Rock the Block, scheduled for September 26, 4:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m.
Second. We have a motion by Councilman Roberts and a second by Councilman Christian. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those nay? Passes unanimously. Okay, item G, the fiscal policy review. Oh, I'm sorry. Recommendation from Chief Appraiser and City Staff on proposed tax rate and setting Thursday, September 11 for a public hearing for tax rate, page 40.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, you have a tax revenue on page 40 of your packet. It shows the 2025 property values that were assessed values by the Colorado County Central Appraisal District. There are the exemption of abatements there, which gives a net taxable value, this compared to the 2024 net taxable value, it's about $25,000 or $25 million more. The tax rate has actually gone down from what it was. The new voter approval rate is .253835. The dividend rate, that is, we'll have to ask David, is .422985. Using the no new rate, no new revenue rate of .236694, will generate revenues of $637,340, which is an increase of $49,674. Using the voter approval rate of 2.53835, will generate revenues of $683,495, that's an increase of $58,907, and that's the ones that the voters have decided to go with, which is an increase in revenue. Any questions?
We need to set a public hearing for the 11th.
Okay. We could have this to the agenda item as a discussion and approval, or discussion and action on this tax revenue.
For now? Do we need a motion?
Just to set type of a hearing, okay?
We have a motion for a public hearing, and Dolores, that date, yeah, was?
September 11th. Our next half.
Make a motion, we set September 11th for a public hearing on the tax rate.
Second.
A motion from Councilman Scardino and a second by Councilwoman Roberts. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor.
And now, fiscal policy review.
Thank you, Mayor. Staff has done a fiscal policy review of where we're at. We recommend the call for action with no changes.
And so, everything's been reviewed, there's no changes, so we didn't need a motion to accept it with no changes.
Correct.
Do we have a motion on that matter?
I'll make it. I'll make a motion that we approve the fiscal policy review with no changes.
Second. We have a motion by Councilman Roberts and a second by Councilman Wilson. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Passes unanimously. Setting date for the Employee Appreciation Dinner?
Thank you, Mayor. Staff recommends setting date for the Employee Appreciation Dinner of 12/12/25 at 6:00 p.m. That's after your December the 11th council meeting.
Do we need a motion in that regard?
Yes, a motion and a second.
I'll make the motion that we set the Employees Appreciation Dinner for December 12, 2025 at 6:00 p.m. At 6:00.
Motion by Councilman Roberts.
Second.
Second by Councilman Scardino. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item I, Executive Session, authorized by Texas Government Code Section 551.074, Personnel Matters, Police Chief, Applicants, and Section 551.072, Deliberation Regarding Real Properties. And we move into Executive Session at, it looks like 647. And of course, we invite the audience